It is 5:52. And I call this meeting to order of the San Benito CISD Board of Trustees, regular board meeting. Once again, we go with our roll call. Ramiro Moreno, present. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller.
Present.
And a quorum has been established. Item 1.2 on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and the Texas Flag. I turn this over to Mr. Medrano.
Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance is from Rangerville Elementary's Julia Ann Sanchez. Julia Ann Sanchez is 10 years old and currently a fifth grader at Rangerville Elementary. Julia is the daughter of Jesus and Lori Ann Sanchez. Her favorite subjects are reading and math. When she's not reading, Julia enjoys playing basketball and softball. Julia loves to dance and has participated in the Ratlarets Dance Team. When she grows up, Julia plans to be a nurse so she can help others. Leading us in the invocation from Rangerville Elementary is Victoria Viapando. Victoria Viapando is a fifth grader at Rangerville Elementary, and she is the daughter of Mr. Felix and Stephanie Viapando, both members of the San Benito CISD family. Victoria is 10 years old and has been raised as a lady Greyhound all her life. She is a very passionate young lady and loves sports, animals, and most importantly, family time and traditions. Her favorite family tradition is having Chuck E. Cheese pizza after the first day of school and IHOP after the last day of the school year. Family is very important to her, and she enjoys spending time with her great-grandparents and her abuela. She enjoys being at school every day when she enjoys reading, math, and PE. She loves all her current and past teachers as a special place of them in her heart. She hopes to one day follow her passions and become a professional in any career that engages her with nature and animals. Will her parents please stand up and be recognized at this time? Everyone, please rise so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please bow your head. Our Father, who art in heaven and in all places around us, we ask you to protect us in this time of distress. We ask you to guide our students on this path full of changes and inconsistency. We ask you to fill our teachers with patience for the trait they love and hold near to their heart, for they are the constant in this time of uncertainty. Give our leaders in this room the wisdom to make decisions solely based on what is good for the district and for all those that makes San Benito CISD our home. God, let your example of selflessness be our guiding torch as we help each other in this time of need. Lastly, we pray that you keep everyone safe from this pandemic and console those that have lost anyone during this time. In your gracious name, we pray. Amen.
Let's give these fine students a big round of applause.
Julia and Victoria, thank you very much for being here tonight. If you would, our board members are going to go up to the front of the podium to welcome you and thank you for being here tonight, and we'd like to present you with a token of our appreciation as well. Thank you for being here. Victoria, amazing job. Thank you for being here.
Great job. Your parents, great job.
Let's get a vote from all the rest of the board members. We can have a picture taken. Do you want to move to this so we can take a picture with that gentleman?
Yes.
Thank you. Parents, thank you for being here. Appreciate you, girl. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. And before we begin, before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topic or topics they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board for each topic or topics. If more than 10 speakers are signed up to speak on the same topic, all additional speakers on that item shall be limited to two minutes. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints, and policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or at the district's central administration offices. Thank you. So tonight, we have several people here for public comment. We have about five individuals. Our first speaker is Beatrice Palomino Villarreal. Ms. Villarreal, welcome.
Ms. Villarreal, if you can please speak into the microphone.
It would be so much easier if I didn't have a mask on. Okay, well, my opening statement is with our core value statement that SBCISD believes that respect for all individuals is essential, and a community with shared ownership, purpose, and commitment work well together. That's our core value, right? My core value is, what is a profitable man if he gains the world and loses his own soul? So let's start with the mask mandate resolution policy. I'm confused if it's a resolution or a policy because I have video that shows in Channel 5 where they are saying it's a policy, but in order for a policy to go into effect, the somebody here, the presiding officer, has to present it to the TEA, and the TEA has to go ahead and pass it, and then they'll go ahead and go over it and see if it becomes a policy and put into place. That goes with the mask mandate resolution policy. Effective Friday, September 10th, that you guys posted on your website, and it states, mask mandate effective Fridays, September 10th. This mask mandate currently supersedes all other sections throughout this working document that indicate that masks are encouraged. So you're saying that this supersedes this page, but on this page, you guys forgot to put the bill GA 38, which supersedes everything else. On top of yours is resolution, and the GA 36, and everything else that's on this statement. I know that I saw that you guys, that would make your resolution irrelevant, invalid. And your resolution states that, I saw you guys cut, copied, and pasted what Eddie Trevino has on his Cameron County Local Health Authority order. Sounds like plagiarism to me, because you all couldn't even come up with your own resolution that you had to copy his, which I have a copy of here. Everything that you guys stated on here, on your resolution, is found on the Cameron County Open to the Public to see how you all matched it together. But what you guys forgot to put, cut, copy, and paste from there were very important pages, which is page number two, the universal indoor masking policy. Or I would guess it's considered their authority, what they put into place, so that supersedes you all. Page four, where the parents.
Ms. Villarreal, before you continue, just not to be rude in any way, but you have several topics on here, and so we're allowing you three minutes per topic. So right now, based on what you presented, I can, I know you mentioned mask mandate, and you've made reference to the GA 38 bill, and right now, you're making reference to the public health guidance, Cameron, so I'm going to go ahead and restart the clock at this point.
That's fine, because it all meets together. It's all going to go together. Page four, where the parents' guardians choice of their child to wear a mask. You guys forgot to post that as well. Page five, where teachers and staff, you guys have a choice. I don't think you all were told you have a choice to wear a mask. Page three states, no disciplinary action should be taken against a student who does not have a mask as described in the U.S. Department of Education, Volume 1. Page five, visitors have a choice. What I want to know is, is it a policy or a resolution? Because it stated differently online, and then you all have two resolutions online. One that is signed by you, Mr. Ramiro Moreno, and Oscar Medrano. Then we have one that has a different order in the bottom with no signature. Which one's valid? The TEA, you all want to go, that you all are going to follow local government entities? Okay. Well, I went ahead and looked up here. The TEA Public Health Guidance also stands under the GA 38 bill, and it takes effect immediately, replacing all prior guidance. It says, if you guys want to change anything to the guidance, go into your local public health, local legal counsel before making final decisions. So local, let me give you all the definition to it, is relating to a particular space or serving only a small portion of something, specific town or area, neighborhood. That doesn't fall under county, but you all decided to go with their orders. But I went ahead and printed out local, or San Benito, and county, and both, oh wow, look at this, they both fall under the GA 38, superseding everything else. That means that not even what San Benito Police Department, the city, they're going to follow our governor Abbott's ruling. Then on here, it also states that you guys, if you all want to implement something, you all should reach out, get the way in from the school kids, the adults, administration, faculty. I don't think that's happened. So then I also decided to go into the local guidelines, and from what I saw, our population of 24,157 people, 0.04% of them have tested positive for COVID since this weekend. And that's also on our public health guidelines on the county, and you can look at it. I saw that you all went around a loophole, tried to file the same thing under the Cameron County, Eddie Trevino, but we don't belong to county, we belong to the city. And that also falls in the jurisdiction of the GA 38. So you guys decided to go against it, and you all are trying to put something over us, a mask, and not give us a voice. It's so funny that we say the Pledge of Allegiance under the Texas flag, but you all don't even honor it, not even under one state. You all want to do your own thing. And that's not right. When everything here states, especially this one, and this is where I don't understand, that you all are telling me you all are above our governor? Your resolution that you guys filed, or I don't know what you guys did, because there's two different papers, it doesn't count, and you cannot stop my children or me from making a choice of having them wear a mask. And there is no disciplinary action nor arrest. People need to know their rights, and they're stated online, but they don't know because you all automatically scare them by just putting a different statement. I reached out to you guys since.
Ms. Villarreal, your time is up with that. We've got another item under doors locked, and you want to address that?
Yes, I'm going to. Why are your doors locked all the time? Why are they locked at 4 o'clock? That prevents people coming in. No one's ever in the front. What time do you all stop working here? Because I know my taxpaying money, it shows, so you all should be working until 5 o'clock, the people at the front. And with that being said, because I'm not going to use my whole three minutes, board members, I have reached out to you guys on multiple occasions since Tuesday, August 31st, and none of you guys, only but two, have reached out to me. If you all don't want to do your job and call me back or call anybody back with their concerns, then what are you all doing sitting here? What are you guys doing there? You're supposed to call us and say, hey, what's going on? You know what? It does matter what you guys say, but you all are proving exactly the opposite, that you do not care what we have to say. So maybe you all should really consider removing yourselves from the board. Or in the next time that there's an election, make sure you state that. Be bold and say the truth. But the main thing is, your resolution's invalid, it's irrelevant, and I want everyone to know that. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Villarreal, thank you. Okay, next guest that we have for public comment is Josué Villarreal. Mr. Villarreal.
Hello, my name is Josué Villarreal. I'm a student at BCMS Campus. I do not agree with the mask mandate, and my voice matters, just like all of ours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Beatrice Villarreal.
Hi, I'm a student at the San Benito High School, and I do not agree with the mask mandate. You all are trying to take away our freedom of choice, and that is not right. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Ms. Mary Maney.
I sort of started this at the other, in the public comment for the tax rate. When you guys stop and consider for tax rate for the upcoming year, as you start looking at it, don't just focus on, they're saying they only charge $1.2, we're charging $1.30, they're charging $1.25, they're charging $1.15. You need to also take a look at the appraised values of those said properties, because, and what that district that they're working with is dealing with as far as, you know, part of it, we are required by federal law to make, to have, to cover part of our indebtedness. We have to be able to do certain things that the state and the government tells us we have to do. We want to make sure that when you start saying, let's lower the tax rate, it sounds wonderful, okay? Don't get me wrong, it sounds wonderful. But the problem with that is, is that when you start comparing apples and oranges, which is what you're trying to do, and you are legitimately correct, there is nothing wrong from a mathematical standpoint to complain, our rate to their rate. The problem is, is you are doing misleading math. You are not taking the whole picture, you're looking at one little piece. You need to look at that appraised value. You have to look at how much it's going to cost us statewide, money-wise, how much they're going to penalize us if we do lower the rates. Yes, we have not changed our rate in a long time, and I think that's an absolute miracle in this day and time from the different places that I have lived across this country, you know, not just the state. It's not, it's not common that the tax rate stays the same. But it is one of those that you just need to take a couple extra things into consideration when you're looking at this. Beware of the misleading statistics, and, because that's what I'm seeing right now, is I'm seeing, and from a math teacher's perspective, I'm telling you, you're not wrong in what you're arguing. They're not wrong in what they're arguing, but you're not looking at the whole picture. You're looking at one little piece, and you're comparing apples and oranges. So that's where I was coming with that. Thank you.
Ms. Maney, thank you. And we have one final presentation. Ms. Garcia, Rosalinda Garcia, welcome.
Good evening, board again, and I want to start off by making the community aware that this is a board that welcomes all public comment, that after like two years of not having public comment open to whatever is of importance to someone, it finally is available here. Policy, they changed policy. So I wanted, on the agenda item about the concession stance, the new regulations, I first saw it on the Facebook where someone was, it was going to interfere with their sales, but I noticed this was occurring several years ago, and I said, why are they letting outside vendors coming here to sell when we're here for the students, for the band? And I'm taking, I'm glad you're taking that approach and that you enforce it. Don't start letting in friends or compadres. But the band is a big organization, and other clubs, they have to do fundraising. And like I said, I'm glad you all took that decision. That doesn't mean Little Caesars, they'll come deliver and they leave. Whoever wants to sell popcorn, they can deliver and leave, just like the other vendors do, Chick-fil-A. They can still donate. I know their intentions are good, that they want to donate to the quarterback club, but this is for the students. And there was a band director, someone said about Dr. Carmen being generous and helping out with funds, so that means they have to dig into the budget and get extra funds. And I was looking at the athletics, their budget, maybe it's over a million or revenue that comes in. The band, $386,000. Other clubs, $125,000. So we can't be taking away revenue from the band by having outside vendors selling there. It's for the students, and I'm 100% support your decision. Thank you for taking that decision.
Okay, that concludes item 1.4, public comment. At this time, I am going to make a recommendation that we move into executive session, into closed session. We have several grievances that we need to be listening to, so right now, basically, I need a motion so that we can move into closed session. Okay? We have a motion by Mr. Orlando Lopez, and second by Mr. Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, 7-0. So the grievance presentations will be held in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and/or 551.082. Consultation with counsel to discuss legal advice may occur in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. The board will now convene in closed session, meaning to consider the grievances. The date is September 14th, and the time is 6:19. Okay, the time is 9:21, and we reconvene into open session. We're going to move on to items discussed in closed session. So item 7.2 is action on matters considered in closed session. Item 7.3, consider and take possible action on Level 3 Appeal Grievance, DG.
I move that the board denies the grievance, and I uphold the decision of the administration at level 2.
So move.
That would be, you made a motion, Mr. Silva, so you second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, 7-0. Item 7.4, consider and take possible action on Level 3 Appeal Grievance, MDR.
I move that the board denies the grievance, and I uphold the decision of the administration at level 2.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mario Silva. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, 7-0. Item 7.5, consider and take possible action on Level 3 Appeal Grievance, MEV.
I move that the board denies the grievance, and I uphold the decision of the administration.
We have a motion by Mario Silva. Do I have a second?
All second.
Second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five, five, no, hold on. Again, let's have a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against, and one abstention. That'll work.
Yep.
Okay, and then 7.6, consider and take possible action on Level 3 Appeal Grievance, AG, and that grievance has been withdrawn. So moving back up on the regular agenda, let's go to agenda item 2.1, presentation on the 2021 Spring Star results. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. I think Mrs. Sandoval is going to present on the 2021 Spring Star results. Here she comes to the podium, excited to deliver data.
Yes, exciting times. Good evening, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. I wasn't being sarcastic, you know that. Today, I'm going to share with you our spring results, and so basically, these results are available for the public. They have been posted, and if you ever want to look for them, I'm going to give you the website so that you guys always can refer to. It's txreports.emetric.net, once again. Once again, txreports.emetric.net. So, I wanted to start with just a recap of how did we get to the results we have. If you remember back in last school year, 2021, we had remote learners, and the commissioner basically said, you're not required to come in to test. So, parents were given that option. So, as we're looking through our data, I want you to keep that in the back of your mind as to, okay, so where are we and why are we where we are. In addition to that, we were also provided an extended online window, so we had quite a bit of weeks for them to come in to test if they wanted to, and our district did a tremendous job getting the kids into test. Then, we also had the Student Success Initiative removed, which meant that the students in 5 and 8 didn't have the three opportunities to test. They were only required to come in to test once, and that was in Maine. And then, of course, this last year was the last year we had the 4th and 7 Writing Test. So, starting 2022, we're not going to have that assessment as a standalone test anymore. And I'm happy to say that our district was 100% online for the state assessments. Every assessment given was given online. So, that was, those were great accomplishments and great news, but, oy, what happened here? I know. Okay, we're done, any questions? Thank you. None? Okay, no. Okay, okay. There you go. See, I'm such a great math teacher. In terms of accountability, the recap that we have for 20, for this past school year, the state was very, very, very clear, and I told us, do not make comparisons between 2019 and 2021, because those are completely different years. There is no way you're going to make a comparison in terms, number one, of the number of kids that showed up to test, and then the performance of the students, because these students had been out for 18 months. So, to get them in to test and to expect the same results that we had 18 months ago, it was going to be a very void comparison. So, they said that, then they also told us, at the end of the year, we're going to give you, because of the state of the pandemic, we're going to give you no ratings, and we declare every district and every campus across the state not rated, declare state of disaster. So, every campus has that rating, and every school district has that rating. But what we did receive was the roster star data. We got scores, though we didn't get ratings and we didn't get progress, school progress as we typically measure from one year to the next. We didn't also get academic growth data. And then, of course, we don't have our distinction designations, all right? So, with that in mind, now let me show you the data. Hopefully, one slide. There we go. At the all-grade levels, this is our results. We have the reading from reading in grade 3 all the way to English 1 and 2, and we have our performance at 55%. Our math encompasses from 3rd grade all the way to Algebra 1. And our performance in math, as you can see, the effects of having been away from face-to-face instruction, you know, the, the results are evident. Math has to be taught face-to-face, or they have to have that, you know, that interaction with the students. Math is difficult as it is, imagine if you having to do it on your own, or with not as much support as they typically need. Then for writing, 50%, science, 51%, and our social studies, which is 8th grade and US history, at 57%. We had about 86% participation across the district, which means we had 13,312 tests administered. So, that was a lot of tests, that was for only the spring administration.
Ma'am, can you repeat that, you mentioned our participation rate?
Our participation rate was 86% for all subjects.
Okay.
And then, we move on to the end of course. Now, once again, the end of course results are only for the spring. In April, we tested 1,310 students, and that was for English 1 and English 2, because remember, those tests are administered a little bit earlier. And then, in May, we had 1,603. In May, we tested Algebra, Biology, and US History, and once again, you can see where we are having to really look back our math results, because those were the lower performing, well, the lowest performing subject in our particular case. These results include our middle school testers, okay, for Algebra and for Biology. In elementary, we have reading and writing. For reading, we have 53% in 3rd grade. In grade 4, we have 52, and in grade 5, we have 63. Now, we think back to the elementary students, we know that our second, our grade 3, they only spent half a year in 2nd grade before they went off on a pandemic. So, they really were out, you know, our 18 months that we keep saying. Our 4th graders, they only did half of 3rd grade per se, and all the way to March, and then they were gone. And our 5th graders were able to be here for 3rd grade to have that regular school year in 2019, but then they don't return until 5th graders to take that test, okay? So, we had at the elementary level, 1,890 tests administered for reading. For writing, once again, that was the last year of writing. For writing, we have 43% with about 617 students that came into test. Next, we have math and science at the elementary level, and so, once again, we have 40%. If we compare that to the 3rd, to the 3rd grade reading results, you can see that our math is lower than our reading. 41 for 4th grade and 47 for 5th grade. And then, we look at our science, science is only tested in 5th grade, so you can see where we have 39%, while those same students score 47% in math, okay? For total elementary tests, we have 5,045. In the middle school reading, we have our 6th graders at 34%, our 7th graders at 61, and our grade 8 students at 60%. You can see the, the biggest drop being in the transition from elementary to middle school, our, at our 6th grade. We administer 1,796 tests for reading. In middle school mathematics, we have 36% in 6th grade, 28% in grade 7, and 30% in grade 8. Middle school, we have also writing, science, and social studies, with writing being at grade 7, science and social studies in grade 8. And you can see our lower performing subjects for these three subjects was social studies and science. Overall, we administer 5,354 tests for middle school. And, oh, I did it again, sorry, but I was basically done. So, this data, even though it may look dismal, it's just a representation of where we are. These are 18 months after COVID. This is not how our students typically perform. And definitely, we know that these are not scores that, that our teachers, our principals, and our students are used to. This is basically the result of the pandemic, right? As a district, we want to be transparent, but we also want to make sure that you guys know this is where we're starting, and this is what we have in place right now. But we also have in place a great team from academics and our support services, then we have Ezra Funds, so the plan is in there, it's just, you know, moving little by little forward to get to where we need to be. And so, that's where we have today, our goal, as it was in 2019, was to get to that 90, 60, 30, remember how the governor had given us that? We were on route until we had a pandemic. So, now, we're, we're going to get back on track.
Ms. Sandoval, sorry, I'm sorry. Can you, can you just briefly explain to some of our Board members that may not know what that 90, 60, 30 is, what it means real briefly, so that they understand that that's our ultimate goal?
Yes, the goal is, you know how when we have our star result, our state assessments, we have Approaches meets Masters? So, the approaches, the goal that the commissioner gave us was to get the 90% of our students to Approaches, which is passing, then 60% at the Meets level, which is on grade level, and then 30% of our students at the Masters level, which is your higher performers. So, that's where we were on track to get to until we had the pandemic.
So, in your opinion, are we two years behind?
Well, it just depends on comparing who to who. If you ask a high performer student that has all the supports at the House, well, then they may not be two year behinds. But if you ask a different household, depending on the variables, it may very well that they're more than two years behind, so that's why it's not, yeah, it's not an easy, an easy comment to, to answer to.
Ms. Sandoval, on the Approaches, the Meets, and Masters, can you tell me if I'm correct, if a student meets the expectations, does that mean that more than likely they will be successful at the next grade level?
If they get to the Meets, yes, the Meets is the, where we want them to be, yes.
Okay, and so, Approaches means if they're in the Approaches section, then they're going to struggle, they could struggle at the next grade level?
They could, but the, the way that it's defined is, at the Approaches grade level, they need some support, they need some support. At the Meets, they need less support, and at the Masters, it's very minimal, if any.
You would say the, the Masters, more or less, would be like your GT kids, gifted and talented.
That's the expectation, yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Ms. Sandoval, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Item 2.2, Review and Discussion of Concession Stand Regulations. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. Moreno. This is just review by the Board, any discussion you might have on it, does not require Board action. Administratively, we met with, I think I told you all, the band director, athletic director, high school principal, SLT was part of that meeting, and we put on paper what we think is pretty easy for us to manage and treats our kids correctly. For varsity football, the four concession stands are assigned as they have been historically. The in-stand sales are assigned to student council as they have been historically. The largest change, it's not a big change, we had one outside vendor, I think, in previous years, two started this year, but we believe in the best interest of our students, we will no longer allow outside vendors to sell inside the stadium. Again, as I think we had pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, if a band or football quarterback club or student council wants to sell those items in their concession stands, they can do so. They can order pizza in, they can order in tacos or whatever they would like to, buy it at one price, sell it at the other, and still profit from it if they choose to do so. So, it's not that we're not working with outside vendors, it's just they won't be the ones making the direct sales inside of the stadium. All other concessions, as they have been done previously, it's just now in writing, fall to the campus principal for middle school, and then at the high school gyms, the high school principal. They'll still allow their clubs to run them under their, their direction. That's it, short and to the point.
Dr. Carmen, thank you for that, are there any questions, Board members?
Yes, I got a, I got a comment, Dr. Carmen, as far as the, the, the outside vendor situation. We've always had it, other school districts have it. I know some, some years, it's, it's better than others, because, you know, depending on the home games, I think it's, it's a, it's a way of allowing our community, you know, a little bit of economic development as far as our restaurants, local restaurants would come in and provide a, some, some tasty food that our band and our, and our other clubs are not providing at the time. And then, also, what it does too, they, they also give money, and I think it's 35% or whatever the agreement may be. So, so, I understand, you know, as far as, you know, just trying to be fair and, 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 I guess, not going to say equitable across the board, but, I mean, to, to not allow vendors into our, into our stadium is, is, I think it's a little, a little harsh. Everybody else does it, I don't understand why we can't, you know, figure this out and can come up with an agreement to, to, to allow them to come in, because it's not, it's not, it's not taking away from our kids. As a matter of fact, it's helping them, because we're providing, you know, food and, and other, you know, snacks that are not being provided by the, by the clubs, and we can make that very clear. I just think it needs to be clear cut.
I agree with Mr. Lopez, I think we, we should allow the band to elect one vendor, and the quarterback to elect one vendor, and all the organizations to elect one, 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 one vendor to sell at the stadium, that's my, that's what I think, I mean, one, one vendor, so. And they can give that percentage to the quarterback club, and that, and then, and the vendor that the band picked, they can give that percentage to the band.
Right, because what's going to hap, what's going to happen is, it's very obvious, you know, as a district, you know, as, as in sports, we, we saw it last year, there was only three home games or whatever. It might have something to do with the COVID, but, you know, they, we have different home games, and the amount of home games and stuff like that, so you want to maximize the amount of opportunity for our kids to, 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 to raise money.
And then, we need to discuss how much they're going to give, you know? It needs to be equalized on both sides, you know what I mean?
Right, but I don't know if this year, I don't know if next year, I mean, I don't know how many more home games we have, I think we have like two.
I don't plan on going through vendors who want to apply and deciding who gets to sell inside our stadium and who doesn't. It's going to be very difficult to identify objective criteria for which firms we let in. Again, if we allow these student groups or the parent booster clubs to work with the restaurants, work with the other food vendors, they can buy these items.
Yeah, you're right.
And sell them to the public directly, and that way, they know what they're paying, and they know what their, their profit is. I, I really don't think it's wise to sit through, there may be 20 people who want to sell in our stadium, especially at the Harlingen game, and so, we're going to choose one for band and one for football? Yeah, I don't want to, this is a slippery slope.
No, Doc, of course, it's not going to be a weekly deal, you're going to do it in the beginning of the year for the best interest of all the kids, yeah. So, what you do in the beginning of the year, you ask vendors whoever want to participate, depending on the amount of home games, and that's why you maximize, you maximize number one, economic development or whatever, whatever the situation may be. But I just think we're leaving out some, some, some potential fundraising for our kids.
So, we got two games left for this season?
We have about two home games, two or three home games left, and, and right now, with this decision that Mr., that Dr. Carmen and his SLT made as far as, at least initiating, because in the past, the Board has not had these regulations, and I think with the amount of games left, I think this is a fair, a fair compromise. You know, next year's a different year, and we as a Board can meet, and if we want to revisit that, I think it's okay, but I do want to make it clear that this is a decision, and, and again, because of, of politics, it's out on Facebook, that Board members made the, you know, these decisions, and this is not a Board member decision, this is something that was discussed by the superintendent, the team, the coaches, the band, and it's not to blame any single one of us individually or as a group. And so, again, just my opinion as, as Board President, I think it's a, it's a good, a good start, and next year, you know, we, we might be able to consider something different.
Right, it's obviously not a Board decision, because y'all don't agree with me, so it's, it's from administration.
And the main, the main point is that it goes back to the students, so that the students have the control of deciding what vendors they want to use and who they want to deal with, and they have control of knowing how much profit they're, they're getting without any questions, any, you know, and so, it's not, nothing against the vendors, it's more about making sure that we're taking care of the kids and giving them that opportunity to have that voice.
Yeah, I understand all that, but I think, I think just pulling the plug right now, after they've already invested and, you know, saw that there was going to be seven games, you know, I think they've already, you know, taken on a cost to cover those seven games, so for us to pull the plug, and I think it's unfair for, for, you know, the vendors from, I mean, or, you know, from San Benito.
Mr. Lopez, with all due respect, I don't think it's necessarily pulling the plug, it's, it's, there was no, there's no protocol in place to get these vendors to start off with. And when, when, you know, when, when a vendor goes to one or more, or, or, you know, I'm not going to mention names, but to an individual and ask, and it's approved and it's considered approved, you know, that's why we're, we're, we have Dr. Carmen to make those decisions and to, to come up with some type of regulation so that we don't have this said. So, I, I don't think it's necessarily pulling the plug, and I'm going to, I am going to quote Dr. Carmen, I mean, if somebody, you know, one of these, and he said it jokingly, and I, and I'm going, I'm going to say it is, you know, if somebody's out there stating that they purchased meat for the next seven games, I'm not going to want to eat it, you know, and that, and, you know, so, you know, that's just not the way it works.
Well, I just, well, that's fine, you're, you're entitled to your opinion, so am I. So, at the end of the day, you know, they were, you know, projecting to be here, you know, to be there for seven, for seven, for seven games, and they already had spoken to our, to, to the band boosters or the student council, the quarterback club, as far as what they were expecting, and I, I just think it's fair to give them an opportunity to just close out the year. And then, we can come up with policies later, because there's never been a policy, you know, so apparently now everything has to be, you know, all of a sudden now, there's, there's policies for everything. So, at the end of the day, you know what, I just think it's unfair for them. Mr. Moreno, they were allowed to come in, and then now, we're just telling them not to, not to show up.
Right, but if I were that, and I understand, and I appreciate that, and if I were that vendor, I'd be reaching out to the two booster clubs, offering to sell them my food so that they could sell them. so that they could sell them at the front counter. So it's not that, like, they have to be out, it's just another means for them to provide the food through our booster clubs, and then they make the direct sale.
Okay, well, as long as they're given the option, though.
And again, those two weeks is, it's money that's gonna go directly to our students, and they decide how they wanna fundraise for themselves. Now, and I'll bring up another concern that the community had, was one of those vendors was, is, what the community is saying is one of those vendors was owned by a former board member, and so we gotta protect the school district.
Okay, moving on, if we may do, item two point three, cash account report. Dr. Carmen.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Pettis, if you're ready, she's making her way down.
Hello again. No. Okay, so it looks like we might be having a little bit of technical difficulty with the PowerPoint. So if you'd like, I can go through the presentations, and I'll give you a little bit of time to go into each report, starting with the cash and investment balances. On the cash account for our first community bank, we have five million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Under our investments, we have a total of forty-three million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents, for a total of forty-nine million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. The next report is a comparison of revenues to budget. So on the revenue side, for the general operating fund, we have year-to-date, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. And under interest and sinking, we have seventy-three thousand, forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents, for a total of one million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And under capital projects, we had one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-six cents in interest this month, for a total overall of eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents, and then we have received the entire forty million. So I just wanna comment on the general fund. The revenues look really small compared to what we've already spent, but July payment from TEA goes to the prior year, and August, we don't get a payment. So you'll start seeing those revenues increasing, and it'll start evening out your revenues and your expenditures. Under expenditures, for general operating fund, we have spent to date, four million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And under interest and sinking, we've spent seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents, for a total of four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And under capital projects, we have spent ten million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents total. The next item is tax collections. So our delinquent taxes, we have our MNO current delinquent, and INS current and delinquent, for the month of August, we have collected a hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents. That's the second number on the total column. To date, we have collected fourteen million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents, which makes up ninety-eight point eight percent of the entire tax levy, and it is a pretty good chunk higher than last year, so that's always a good sign. And then the last one we have are the check registers. Under general fund, two million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Student activity, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Construction, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, no scholarship checks. Under payroll, six million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And under payroll liability, one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, for a total of eleven million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents. And you do have your checks in front of y'all, if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer that.
I have a question on scholarships. Do you get any scholarship checks that come out in here? Who's in charge of scholarships?
The scholarships are usually paid out from our superintendent's scholarship fund, and those are paid out in the end of the, well, in spring and fall. There are two dispersments, there's two main dispersments. And depending on the amount that they get, they'll get either one or two thousand dollars on each of those.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any questions?
In relation to the scholarship, Ms. Pettis, you said that it's a superintendent fund, and how do y'all get those funds?
The golf tournament, or donations. The golf tournament that we usually have, that's our main fundraising event.
Okay, and was there a reason why it wasn't held this year?
I don't have the answer to that, sir, other than COVID.
Yes, because of COVID.
Because of COVID?
Yes, ma'am.
So it wasn't because any of us said, "Don't have it"?
I, I'm not privy to those conversations, so I don't know.
There was some false information saying that the board members didn't want to fundraise for scholarships, so I'm, I'm glad you're clearing that out.
I had not heard that, to be honest, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, business and finance, item three point one, request approval to accept gifts bequest for 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Are we good? Item three point two, request approval of budget amendments for 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item three point three, request approval of 2021-2022 unemployment compensation with Texas Association of School Boards. Question? Consent? Item three point four, request approval of memorandum of understanding between Samanito CISD and La Villa ISD for shared services for the Carl Perkins Grant. Questions? Consent? Item three point five, request approval of resolution to set the maintenance and operations tax rate. Questions? Consent? Item three point six, request approval of resolution to set the income tax rate? Consent? Item three point seven, request approval of resolution for tax payment discounts. Questions? Consent? Item three point eight, request approval regarding resolution of independent sources for investment training and updating designation of investment officers. Question? Consent? Item three point nine, request approval regarding adding accounting director as a signer on Texas Class Investment Bank Account. Questions? Consent? Item three point ten, request approval regarding adding accounting director as a signer on First Public Investment Bank Account. Questions? Consent? Item three point eleven, request approval regarding adding accounting director as a signer on Ameritrade Investment Bank Account. Questions? Consent? Item three point twelve, request approval to award bid proposals for RFP-0821 GMS, General Merchandise and Services. Questions? Consent? Item three point thirteen, request approval to award bid proposals for RFP-0221 MRN, Maintenance and Related Items. Questions? Consent? And item three point one four, request approval to award bid proposal of RFQ-0821 DB, Tennis Squirts at Riverside Middle School. Questions? Consent? Consent agenda, administration, item four point one, request approval of the affiliation agreements between Samanito CISD and Treasure Hills Healthcare and Rehabilitation Center and Sun Valley Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item four point two, request approval of the agreement between Samanito CISD and the ACT, Texas Education Agency State Participating District Agreement for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item four point three, request approval of the inter-local agreement between Samanito CISD and Texas State Technical College, TSDC Educational Talent Search Program. Questions? Consent? Item four point four, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between Samanito CISD ACE After-School Program and the Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item four point five, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between Samanito CISD and La Villa ISD for Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant ACE After-School Program between 2021 through 2027 fiscal years. Questions? Consent? Item four point six, request approval of the memorandum of agreement between Samanito CISD ACE After-School Program and Samanito Boys and Girls Club for 2021 through 2020, 2027 fiscal years. Questions? Consent? Item four point seven, request approval of the State Compensatory SCE Resource Guide for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item four point eight, request approval of option to extend grant writing services for the after-school program. Questions? Consent? Item four point nine, request approval of revision to the 2021-2022 Compensation Plan. Questions? Consent? Item four point ten, request approval of resolution to the COVID stipend. Questions? Consent? Item four point eleven, request approval of resolution of the COVID leave days. Questions? I. Item four point twelve, request approval to extend the proposal of RFQ-0120 TNCSS, Telemedicine Services for one additional year. Questions? Consent? Item four point thirteen, request approval of Bus Driver CDL Training Program. Questions? Consent? Item four point fourteen, request approval of board minutes. Questions? Consent? Okay, so at this time, I would need a motion to approve consent agenda items three point one through three point fourteen, and items four point one through four point ten, and four point twelve through four point fourteen. So I have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Janie Lopez moves, and a second by Oscar Medrano to approve. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Okay, we go back to item four point eleven, request approval of resolution of the COVID leave days. Dr. Cruz?
There are draft proposals on here, and we need to decide on one.
Yes, ma'am, if I remember correctly, I think that the difference is that the alternative draft includes that people have to have had their, their vaccine to be eligible for these additional days. I think that's, that's the only difference, so we just need a recommendation from the board on which, which option they would, they would like, or discussion on.
I make a motion to approve the one for the sick day leaves for all employees regardless of COVID vaccine.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution, it's a resolution, correct? A resolution without having to have the employee necessarily have the vaccine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Orlando Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. But we just need to make sure that we have the right one.
No vaccine, right?
Right? The right resolution. All right, action agenda items, discussion, consideration, and possible approval regarding purchases over twenty-five thousand. Dr. Carmen.
Shall defer this to Mrs. Pettis.
So we have six vendors that we are requesting business for with purchases over twenty-five thousand, and that would be CDW, Dell for our Dr. Cash Elementary, Dell for our CTE program, Discovery Education, Smart Tag, and Parsons. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve item five point one?
So moved.
I have a motion by Oscar Medrano, and I need a second. Rudy Corona, okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Item five point two, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of competitive seal proposals, CSP-0921, RPJKLB, resurfacing the parking areas at Jana K. Landrum Auxiliary Services Building, RE-BID, B-I-D. Dr. Carmen.
Actually, I believe we're gonna have Mrs. Pettis and Mr. Cavazos present on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. The administration went ahead and seeked competitive seal proposals for the repaving of the parking lot at the Jana K. Landrum Auxiliary Building. We, bids were due today at ten, at ten AM. A committee of four went ahead and evaluated all the proposals according to the criteria set before the Texas Education Agency, which are their nine factors. I think before, before yourself, you should have the, the ranking. And you should also have the bid tabulation. There were five bids that were received today, and you should have the ranking of each, every five of them.
I do. It is on the board docs, I have it because I printed it, but it's on your board docs. So Mr. Cavazos, based on, on the different vendors that we have listed here, Longhorn Services are in our paving LLC, Foremost Paving Incorporated, Reiner Construction Services, and GNT Paving LLC. We've got the different price lists, we can see who the lowest bid is, but do we have a recommendation at this point?
At this point in time, the, the committee recommends GNT paving, according to the proposals that were submitted. Yes, sir, you got it.
I make a move to recommend GNT paving?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recommend GNT paving LLC, however, there is a question on the floor, so go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Cavazos, can you please explain what those days mean on the right side? One has one.
Those are the days to complete the job.
So, so, okay, so I guess my question here is, because of course, you know, I'm not questioning you guys, your, your committee, all, all I'm asking is that, you know, Reiner came in pretty cheap.
Yes, sir.
So is there some reason why?
Well, we went according to the ranking of the criteria that we use that Texas Education Agency allows us to use. According to the bid proposals that they submitted, the paperwork, the references, financial statements and all that, that's what we based our decision on, and we figured that GNT is the best value for the district. The best value? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I think Reiner was at nine ninety-four, nine eighty, and GNT is at one point two oh four.
But like, as you mentioned, is it three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar difference?
Yes, sir.
Correct, but based on the research that you all did, and based on the, on the financials payments, we're getting the best bang for our buck with GNT?
Yes, sir.
Or G, GNT paving?
Yes, sir. That's what the committee recommends.
Mr. Cavazos, my question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cavazos, so, so once again, I'm just gonna point out, so Reiner Construction is coming out, they're saying they can build it in sixty days versus the highest of a hundred and fifty, and then they're coming in close to three hundred thousand dollars less, and also they rank number two as far as your scoring.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, what, where's the scoring, the scoring's here that you did, right?
Yes, sir, with a committee of four, it was a committee of four, myself, Mrs. Pettis, Mr. Pettis, and Dr. Carmen was a part of the committee.
Just, can we get like a little bit more insight on what, was, is there a difference in like the thickness of the pads that they're using, or?
So the Texas Education Agency allows us to use a certain criteria to evaluate all these proposals? Let me just. Criteria number one is purchase price, which, there's a hundred points total that we have total points of the whole criteria. Fifty percent of that is price, okay? Reputation of vendor and the vendor's goods and services and references, they, they get ten points for that. The quality of vendor's goods and services, they get ten points for that. The extent at which the goods and services meet the district needs, they get ten points for that. The vendor's past relationship with the district, a listing of previous projects with the district, they get five points for that. The long-term total cost to the district to acquire the vendor's goods and services, in other words, their financial statements, they get five points for that. The impact of the ability to district to comply with the laws or the rules relating to historically underutilized businesses, they get five points for that, which is a hub certification where they register the business with the state. hub certification where they register the business with the state. Vendor's ultimate parent company or majority owner has its principal place of business in the state or employs at least 500 persons in the state, they get three points for that. And then any other relevant factor included in the R F P, they get two points for that. So according to all the financial statements, all the paperwork that we went through when they submitted their bids, that's how we rank them and that's how we score. And we do it as a committee of four. So everybody ranks, gives them their own points.
Mr. Cavazos, one quick question. As far as references, how many points does that give?
References, I think you get 10 points.
10 points? So that's even higher than the finances. So did we call any of, did we check, how did they all score on references?
Well, I don't have actually the breakdown of the references which everybody scored. Did we call any of the references? No, we didn't.
How did you base that one?
The references? By all the references that they listed? So maybe G N T had submitted four or five pages of references, some big jobs that they did in their, Reiner did include about two or three pages of references, but we felt that maybe there were smaller projects, they weren't as big as the one that we're doing now. If you go out and look at the UTEC's parking lot, it's a huge parking lot. That's a big project. So that's how we based the decision on the references.
So is Reiner bonded, just like all the rest of them, have all the paperwork straight and all that?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, if they're going to come and do the job, they have to be bonded regardless. If they get hired to do the job, they have to do 100%.
No, I understand, but you know, I just want to make sure, you know, because that's quite a bit of difference, $300,000, you know?
Excuse me?
And it's quite a bit of difference.
Yes, sir.
$300,000.
Again, that's just a committee recommendation?
And it's only 22 points apart.
Yes, sir. That's a committee recommendation, according to all the proposals and the financial statements, all the references, all the paperwork that they submitted, that's what the committee recommends.
One of the things that I look at as well, and I'm looking at, as you mentioned, that the number of days it's going to take to complete the project, I mean, like you mentioned, this is a huge endeavor, and just because somebody can complete it in 60 days doesn't mean that you're going to get, I'm not, I don't know any of these, but that doesn't mean you're going to get the best quality work as well. So because it takes twice that amount?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, you know, if it's money well spent and we're going to get, I mean, a quality product that's going to last us several years, you know the concerns that we've had for months?
Yes.
And so at this point.
Mr. Pettis worked on the technical specifications, so he pretty much, that parking lot, done right, should last a good long time.
Has, has Reiner ever done anything within the school? I know G N T has, correct?
Excuse me?
G N T has done, has history with the school district?
I think they did one project, the road that goes behind the stadium, that they did it sometime back.
G N T?
I think when they opened, yeah. Reiner has never done any work for the district.
Okay, so Reiner has never done any work.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to go ahead and recall the question. We have a motion on the floor for G T paving. I'd like to second that motion. All those in favor at this time, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, all those opposed? One, two, three. Okay, motion carries 4-3.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 5.3, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of agreement between Samanito C I S D and Staff Force Personnel Services. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think Dr. Cruz will talk about this. This is the assistance for our nurses.
Good evening, board. Staff Force is a temp agency that we would like to hire to assist our nursing staff with clerical help. We researched a couple of different agencies, three different agencies, two of them replied. This is the most cost-efficient selection. For 18 nurses to receive one day of clerical help, excuse me, 19 nurses, 18 nurses, one day of clerical help per week for each, for eight weeks, would cost us $19,190.91 at that time, then we'll reassess whether that assistance is, if we'll continue that, that need and help, requesting their help with clerical assistance. So this agreement, Mr. Willer did have the opportunity to take a quick look at it, but the negotiation will have to happen after the meeting, after we clean up some language in it, and so we're requesting permission to sign it, subject to those changes that he recommends.
So basically, Dr. Cruz, what this is intending is this is, and I'm going to be honest, this one particular agenda item, I didn't brief myself on, so basically, this is a company that's going to provide these clerical personnel to assist our 18 nurses, and I know, working for the school district, our nurses are overwhelmed with the paperwork that they've got.
They are. So there's, due to COVID, there are a lot of contact tracing, of course, and then reporting requirements. The contact tracing has been an overwhelming job for them. They have been, you know, staying late to try and keep up with the paperwork and the demand of the reporting and just basically documenting all the different cases, even for our own purposes, and make sure that we're, you know, applying our return-to-school plan fairly and efficiently. And so we're requesting the additional assistance through a temp agency so that we're not fully committed to personnel that we may not need in the future. We would hire them on an as-needed basis. This is just an estimate for eight weeks. That was our initial conversation of how long we would get them for and then reassess whether that temp agency would continue on with us.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Dr. Cruz. With that said, do I have a motion on the floor, do I have a motion to approve item 5.3 as read?
So moved.
Okay. Orlando Lopez?
Sorry.
Ariel Cruz? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 7-0, motion carries. Item 5.4, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of increase for hourly rate for bus drivers. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reiner, you have a request here to consider an increase in salary for our bus drivers. We have some information there for your review. First attachment should be the comparison of what we pay our bus drivers, hourly rate, plus we have the retention stipend, the COVID recovery, and then a second COVID recovery just for hourly employees. So in stipends, in addition to their hourly rate, bus drivers will receive this year between $1,500 and $2,000. And then if you go to page two, you'll see a comparison. South Texas I S D did raise their rate this year to $18, and people may think that's a reason why there's a shortage, but if you look at the rest of the districts, our starting salary is 1416, Harlingen is 1453, Los Fresnos is 1407, Brownsville 1335, Sherland is 1508, Donna at 1475, and then Mission is a little bit higher at $16. So our hourly rate is actually pretty competitive, and when you factor in the stipends that this board has approved for our bus drivers, they will actually make more than comfortably placed employee with Harlingen, obviously Los Fresnos, Brownsville, et cetera.
So, Dr. Carmen, can you, along those lines that you just mentioned, with the, like right now, if we're looking at the minimal on that, on that scale, where do our bus drivers, the majority of our bus drivers fall as far as their salaries? Is that something that either you or Dr. Cruz can answer?
That's hard to say right off the top of my head, sir, but the range is $14.16. Minimum is $17.13, and max is $19.76. So that is the range of pay.
Okay, so if we were, if we were to lowball this, let's just say, just for, you know, for mathematical purposes, if we were to lowball this and say that all our bus drivers were at the low end at $14.16, and then adding in the, all these stipends and things that we're offering our, everybody, not only the bus drivers, how, how much of an increase would that roughly be? Do we have that estimate? Would it be a couple of bucks? Would it be? And I'm sorry I'm posing these questions, but I'm just trying to get a better figure so that we can, we can, you know, kind of really have a truer comparison with these other districts within the region.
So if you took the $2,000 in stipends, if they, if they have the highest on the retention and then the other 2,500?
Okay.
If you were to divide that $2,000 out by 2,080 hours, which would be a 40-hour work week times 52 weeks, it adds 96 cents an hour onto their pay scale, which would put us above, I think, everybody on that list except Mission and South Texas I S D. And that's if they work 52 weeks, which they all do not work during the summer, of course.
Okay, so.
So right now, Dr. Carmen, if I'm reading this correctly, we have 14 vacancies right now?
I believe that's as of yesterday, as of Friday?
Yes, the last couple of days, sir. It's, we have 14 vacancies, and just a reminder that bus driver shortages across the state and even across the country. We aren't the only district that is struggling to find bus drivers. It's just something that we have dealt with over years.
Correct.
In fact, but now even more so due to COVID.
Dr. Cruz, on their, on their exit interview, is there, is there a reason why they're leaving? Are they leaving because of more money, they're leaving because of moving out of town, or what's their, their reason?
Many are retiring. Many just, you know, it's, it's a few. We always, we will always have a handful that go from district to district, but it's, it's really not that many. It's, the majority are, live in our area, they want to work in our area, and they're very committed to our district.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
With that said, I think we need to give them a little more, in my opinion, you know, give them.
What's the issue of why, what happens when we don't have enough bus drivers?
Well, we have to either cover double routes to go back and pick up, or we have people from our office, but I don't know that adding to their hourly rate is going to fill our 14 vacancies. I don't, I don't think that's going to solve the problem.
Right.
Because it's everywhere, and again, if you factor in our stipends, we're paying more per hour than the surrounding districts. The other thing to consider, there's a second attachment there, I just threw a dollar value at Mrs. Pettis, and I said, look at $2 an hour. If the board gave a $2 an hour raise based on our current time sheets, what would that cost us in a fiscal year? And so she looked at the last, I think, two weeks' pay, regular hours and overtime hours, and added back in $2 with benefits, because it all goes up percentage-wise, we look about $307,000 to give a $2 raise to all of our bus drivers, and we're to balance budget right now. So that would either have to come out of fund balance, put us in a deficit situation, and I'll remind you that we do have a salary analysis coming up this spring with Tasby. I think, once we have a full picture, I think that might be when the board wants to consider it, but I, again, I am not convinced that increased hourly rates can get us 14 extra drivers in-house.
So with that, go ahead. With that said, our bus drivers are pretty much all doing overtime right now?
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay, so they're getting a good?
That's correct. If they go to other districts, sometimes they won't guarantee 30 hours, right? And granted, we don't guarantee the overtime, but because of the shortages, yes, they're all making extra money.
So what is this doing, and I don't, I don't want to veer way off of this, we're talking about hourly rate, but what is that doing with our, with our transportation routes as to kids arriving at school on time? Is that putting, is that hindering, or are we, are we doing okay?
I would defer that here to principals or Ms. Martinez, if she wants to address that.
Ms. Martinez, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Carmen. Yes, there are days that we are running late. We will call the campus, usually high school V M A. We double, sometimes we triple some routes, so we're shuttling students back and forth in between, in the mornings, in the afternoons, about 6:30 in the evening, maybe, we finish high school and V M A. So that, that shortage is causing us some strain. We do call the campuses and let them know when they're going to be late so they can hold breakfast for them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Do you think it's, do you think it's because pay, or why are they leaving, or?
Some, I have lost some drivers due to pain. They've decided to go back to truck driving, and I have, did lose some to COVID, they just didn't want to work during COVID, said they'll come back, and I did have some retire.
Thank you.
But what would you estimate if they go back to truck driving? It's, it's a lot more than just $2 more an hour than what they're making right now.
Absolutely, yeah.
We'll, we'll never make that up.
No, never. Yes. Any question? Any more questions?
How do you think, if, if we were to give them a $2 raise, how do you think that would impact your department?
If you go up $2, you're certain going to keep your staff here, the ones I already have here that are already looking. I'm going to be honest with you, I've got five that already told me they're going to go next door, which is another district, and they're just waiting, honestly. And then I have individuals that will come back this way to fill in vacancies because they are from here, but they're making more money in our neighboring district.
Ms. Martinez, one of the, one of the points that I want to make, and this was something that we discussed before as well, is that we feel, we, I, for one, and the whole board did, but I for one mentioned what a great job you're doing and how much respect these bus drivers have for you. But one of the things that we, we discussed was that our, our bus drivers, at least the ones that I've spoken to and I've seen, and they're proud to work for Samanito C I S D, and they're proud to work for you. And like you just mentioned right now, you mentioned that maybe giving them a couple more bucks is really going to want them to stay, and, and one of the, one of the discussions that was had, or one of the conversations that was had, was, you know, we give them $2 more dollars, and then Harlingen offers them $3, and we're going to be going back and forth, and I, I really disagree with that, because going back to what you just said, our bus drivers are proud to be here, and, and they, they want to be valued, and I feel that, that like you mentioned, offering them a buck 50, $2 more an hour is going to entice them to stay, and then welcome those others that left because they were making those couple of bucks more, that they're going to want to come back, and that might help fill our vacancies to, to be in a better spot compared to the other districts. What, what do you feel? I mean, with that comment that I made, do you agree or disagree? And this is in all honesty.
I, I absolutely agree with you, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So if we're talking raises in salary, maybe we should talk to Mrs. Rodriguez as well. And we've got our nurses working all kinds of hours, we have difficulty filling those positions. Maybe we shouldn't single out one position, for whatever reason, maybe we should look holistically at the entire district. So do you want Mr. Rodriguez to come talk about nurse salaries, and whether that would help retain them as well?
I wouldn't say so, since they're not on the agenda right now, Mr., Dr. Carmen. So I think that would be veering off the agenda. Am I correct, Mr. Willer?
Appears to be related to bus drivers. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. The agenda item appears to relate to bus drivers, sir. So really, you know, admirable subject, but I think probably this one's limited to bus drivers.
Okay, so with that said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
I have a question.
I would like to recommend, I'd like to make a motion, and then you can have a question, ma'am. I'd like to, I guess your excuse.
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and move to, to propose, to propose, yes, Ms. Martinez, to propose that we go ahead and, and look into possibly giving our bus drivers a $2 an hour raise. And again, Dr. Cruz has a question, so Dr. Cruz, you may have the floor.
Rather than jumping the gun, which seems to be done a lot around here, when is that teacher's salary review supposed to come out of Tasby? Or not teacher's salary, just overall salary?
Right. Dr. Cruz, that starts in February, is that right?
Yes, it's scheduled for the spring.
We're off subject again, you're correct. So, but thank you, though, you're, we, that's, that's a good question. That question is a question.
I don't think that's off subject because it's directly related to this.
Not to bus drivers, though.
Yes, it is, because when will the bus, if we get that salary review, are the bus drivers included in that salary review?
You're correct.
Okay, so it is related.
Yes, it would be. You're correct. Okay, going back to my motion, I.
I wasn't done speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
So if we do some type of salary review and it comes out that our rates are lower, they're not in line with where they should be, is there a way to back pay or something like that at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Vicki, but I have a question.
All right.
But it's, it's very obvious that we're equitable across the board, you know, with other school districts, along with our stipends. My only concern is, of course, where's this money going to come from? The fund balance, you know? I mean, of course, we want to, we want to do everything we can, and we've always done it. We've given raises for the past four years, I mean, it's not, it's not a secret, but I think my only concern is where we're going to pull this, you know, 300 and some thousand
going to pull this, you know, 300 and some thousand dollars. You know, it's great, but that's my concern. I think we need to really focus on the ramifications of that and, and really see what we can do. There's other options we can do to, to entice, you know, uh, you know, more bus drivers here. But I, I think as far as the hourly rate, I think we're pretty comparable to everybody else. And along, that's, that's the reason why we give them the stipend, just so we can be, you know, uh, you know, give them that assurance of appreciation. So I think that needs to be brought up more and, and discussed more with the staff, so they realize and understand how much, you know, how mu, I mean, as far as the stipends are concerned.
I mean, as far as it's concerned, I mean, we're spending a lot of money up here. We just approved of $1.2 million for parking lots. And more money coming out of that mon, more money coming out of the school district. Where is it all going when we have this resource that's going to come to us at the end of the year where that we can go back and fix, not fix things, but adjust the things if they're necessary with, when it, in terms of salary, if it does come out that we're not equitable, even if you're saying we are?
Right.
If somehow that salary review comes out and says that we're not, we can always go back, which would be the more conservative option.
The main concern is, um, we have students that are arriving late to the campuses. We're holding them back because I know that for teachers, every minute, I used to be a teacher, every minute is very important. So if you have students that are, are late 10, 15, 20 minutes because the buses are late, because we don't have enough bus drivers, then that's crucial time that our teachers need with the kids. And that's crucial time that's taken away from the kids every day. It's not a, a once-a-day thing. It's every day that our kids are late. And if our bus drivers leave, uh, like Ms. Martinez said, if our bus drivers leave, that's going to make it worse for our kids. So right now, what's important to me is we got to make sure that all our kids are going to be taken care of, that they get to school on time, and that our buses are punctual. So I make a second motion.
Hold on.
I second the motion, I'm, I'm still talking. I second the motion
Give them a $2 raise.
Um, that Mr. Moreno made to go ahead and give the increase to the bus drivers at, uh, $2. And, and we have an excellent CFO that knows how to manage the money. And we always get, uh, you know, transfer forms and so forth of where they're moving money around from one place to another. So I think that our CFO and Dr. Carmen would probably do an excellent job in trying to figure out, uh, where to, where to get that money from so that it doesn't affect, uh, our school district.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor and a second by Janie Lopez.
I have a quick question.
To go ahead and, I want to recall the question. I think we've had enough discussion on this. So I'd recall the question.
I'm sorry, but I'm a board member. I sit on this board and I have one more question.
Okay. Dr. Cruz, go ahead.
Ms. Martinez, do you think that we've done, you don't have to come up here. I just want to know, do you think that we've done a good job of educating your department with the stipends and everything that we've, that the school district has implemented for them?
Yes, ma'am.
So they, they're fully aware of everything that they're going to be, all the benefits that they're going to be receiving this year?
Yes, ma'am. I announced that, that tomorrow morning, y'all announce whatever the group is going to, so they're fully aware.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Cruz. So we have a motion on the floor and a second by, uh, Ms. Lopez to approve a $2 increase for bus drivers, uh, an hour, $2 an hour increase. Uh, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, zero. Motion carries. Uh, item 5.5, Discussion and Consideration Regarding Report from Insurance Agent of Record Bob Trevino on Voluntary Insurance Offerings. And, uh, we have Ms. Gonzalez here to present. Welcome, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Corina Gonzalez with Representative Bob Trevino. And I'm going to pass out these parts of the... I do not. So I'm going to go ahead and begin. Um, I would like to thank you, um, for the opportunity to service the San Benito School District. Um, as your agent of record, we're assigned a task to look over the benefits and do the cost savings for the employees. So this report that I just handed out, I mean, we flipped the page. It would give us the rates of what the voluntary products, of what the employee was paying and what the new offerings are with Allstate for the accident. Um, we're doing the hospital indemnity also. There's a rate savings, the critical illness, and then there's a cancer plan. I'm doing, I'm kind of doing the table of contents.
Before, before you continue, can somebody tell me if this information is on board docs? This presentation? No?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay. And then the cancer plan, there's no, uh, true cancer standalone plan with the district. So we also offered a cancer plan and we removed a rider that wasn't the critical illness for cost savings. And then the plan also, there was a change in that. We're offering 66 and two-thirds of the employee's salary as opposed to 40, 50, or 60. And we're also doing a first day hospitalization rider on a 30-day plan or less. So if an employee's in a 30-day plan, they are hospitalized. As long as they're admitted, um, for consecutive hours, they will waive their days. So it'll be the same if they're on the 0 to 7, 14 and 30. So now I added in detail a little bit more of our, uh, products. The accident plan, when it comes to insurance and voluntary products, it's not easy to compare like apples to apples. It's apples and oranges. Some benefits are higher, some are lower. We, what we did do is we matched our high plan to your highest. And then there's like a, um, option one, which would be kind of the lower plan. It's a little bit of reduced benefit. So if we just go down to see the rates on option one, um, the low plan was 1233. We're doing 677, but we are also, um, on some of the benefits, I was noticing will be like a little bit less as far as like a doctor visit, instead of 75, it's 50. But the high plan for option two was 1577, and now it's 1061. So was, while I was reviewing and comparing our option one that an employee has, um, if they go even with the highest plan with Allstate, it'll still be cheaper and they will match their benefits. Um, so like I said here, too, like they're, they're very different. Um, if they're in a, um, accident treatment, it's 125 on the high plan. Ours is $200. Still, um, they're paying less with more benefits. Then there's some that might be reduced, like the accident physician treatment. On their low plan is 75, high is 100. We did 50, but we still did 100. So a person can be on the lower high plan and still be paying less with Allstate. And our, like I said, our high plan is going to match the low plan that's currently in effect with the district. Um, and there is a little bit difference. It's also like wellness. I believe Guardian does pay $50 a year, and the new one will be doing $25, but two visits, separate visits, or four of its family. So give them an extra benefit on that as well. And then on the life insurance, um, it's 2540 now. We're doing 2040. But most employees, if they're on the low plan, they're all jumping to the high plan because it's still very inexpensive and it's matching their coverage. And, and they're getting a cost savings as well this year on this product. Okay? We flip over on the hospital indemnity. That's kind of like a gap plan that is offered to the district. I always look at, add rates, even when I do presentations, it's always about how much it costs and then the coverage. And we go down to the rates for Guardian. Um, if you're under 50 years old, it was 2760. And if you were above 50 to 59, it was 3745. We did composite rates, which is 1950 flat rate, whether it's a person that's 18 years old or a person that's 70 years old, because we do have, um, employees here that are at that age. It's 1950. So they're getting a big savings there and even the family coverage. The new plan is 4160. With Guardian, they were paying either 7145 or $140. We also matched the $1,000 hospital admission benefit. We did the $100 a day for ICU. It was 100 for Guardian. We did 200 with the Allstate. And we're also, uh, waiving pre-existing and it's guaranteed issue. So if anybody's, like, currently pregnant and getting the plan, it's going to be covered. With the other plan, it was a nine-month waiting period. So we did some savings also on this plan. Any questions so far?
I do. I have a question with that, with that, the, the rates on the indemnity, hospital indemnity, we're, as we're looking, that, that, uh, the plan that, that was afforded to our employees, uh, there was a, a big price difference if you were, uh, at the age of 50 to 59. And so with this Allstate benefits, there is no, you, am I correct that you stated that there is no age?
Mm-mm.
It's just a flat rate, a composite rate for, for any age?
Yes. So they're getting a big savings there.
Okay. And although, uh, just right now, and, and although you are, uh, you're in some situations, you're not compa, like you said, you're not comparing apples to apples. Sometimes it's apples to oranges. But however, like, looking in some of the plans that you've already covered, uh, say for instance, your accident plan, your group hospital indemnity, the critical illness plan that, you know, basically, uh, the old program that we had was Guardian, which I don't, I don't know Guardian, but I don't hear very great things about it. But basically, what I, what I see is that our employees, those that elected, because this is not a mandatory insurance, this is a volunteer insurance.
Correct.
But our employees were actually paying roughly 50% more. And now they're going to be able to, if they opt to, to do this, are going to be able to save at least 50% of what they were paying previously.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, also, like, on the critical illness, um, we, we used to be agents here prior. We used to have a standalone cancer plan that gave the employees a lot of more benefits as far as for radiation, for chemo, for surgery, for mileage if they go to, um, to MD Anderson for hotel. And this critical illness just added a rider that is currently with the district. So we kind of separated that. And we go to the critical illness, um, information. A lot of, a lot of the things do match at 100% of your covered amount for 10, 20, 30. Um, one of the differences also is Guardian paid 25% of the employee's benefit amount for children. We're doing 50% for employee and spouse. And then, and I highlighted in green what is not being covered in our plan, because we removed the cancer invasive, the institute, and the chemotherapy was only paying 150 per month. It was a maximum of $900 only. So when we jump to the next rate, I'll explain the cancer. But if we look at the rates here, I did the 10,000. And they're an employee, and I'm going to go through the middle, like 40 to 49, and they're paying $15, and then go to 881. And a family plan from 40 to 41, from 22 into 13. This is also going to be a savings there. Um, and then you'll see more savings for those employees that have a $20,000 benefit or 30. So we flipped the page. It'll tell you there, 40 to 49, 20,000 was $30. Now it's $16. And if you did a 30,000 from 45, it went to 24. And if you go down to the, uh, employees that are older, from 50 to 59, $53, now it's $29. And if you go to the 30,000, they're in the $100 range, which is very, very inexpensive. And ours is still at 6147. And so if you go down and you go see what it would cost for a family rate, you know, it's a, it's a big difference in premium as well. So they're getting a big savings.
Ma'am, I got, I got a question for you. Um, it says monthly rates here. Are, are these locked in monthly, annually, or quarterly, or what?
These are all monthly rates.
Okay. So they're, so they, so they can, they can be, they can inflate from month to month? Or this is a locked-in fixed rate?
No, these are locked in by their age.
Okay. By their, but is it annually? Or do you, or you have to revisit this contract again until you can, if Allstate will?
No. So like, if you jump 40 next year, you're going to stay in the 39 age, uh, age rate.
Okay. So, so you guys have a, for, I'm, I'm just assuming like a two or three-year contract with Allstate that's going to stay the same?
Correct.
It's not going to change?
It is not going to change.
Okay. Thank you.
And now since we did remove the critical illness, I'm sorry, the cancer right on the critical illness, I added the flyer of the cancer that is being offered. I highlighted towards the bottom under optional benefits. The benefit here would give you a lump sum of 48. But I also want to point out that the cancer plan we're also offering covers ICU for any reason. So it does not have to be related to cancer. It can be because of COVID. I've had that, this plan used a lot for COVID. It can be an accident, can be any reason as long as it's ICU and it's included in this plan. And then I highlighted the air surface ambulance because it does cover air or, um, ground ambulance if it takes you directly to ICU. So I know people have that MASA that does pay that, but this is also included in this plan. So it's a very neat benefit. Um, I've seen it used a lot. And so I like to point that out, especially with what's going on right now. Um, and then if you go to the top, it tells you what it pays per daily fee for radiation and chemo, for blood and plasma, and all those benefits that we would need for cancer. So a lot of the people that just had the cancer, the critical with the cancer rider, they were losing all these benefits. And this is continued benefits. It's not going to just expire. It's continued. So if you're getting radiation, you know, 12 months later, or you reach your 12 months, it's still going to keep paying. Um, and then we have the rates on the last page, which is 1921. Also, a flat rate is not by age. And if you want the high plan, it's 3617. Now, in the bottom of the rates, we also put at the additional cancer benefits. There's also 31 other benefits included in the plan, which would be like AOLEs, muscular dystrophy, there's hepatitis, there's lupus, there's Addison disease. And as we're doing enrollment right now, because we started two weeks ago, there's a lot of people that do have these illnesses. They're able to get on it. Um, it is guaranteed issue. Um, so it's a really neat benefit that we are offering as well. So I do have a lot of people that have told me, well, I only have critical because of the cancer, but it was a very small benefit. They're able to jump over here or get both plans without the cost savings that they're getting.
So they don't?
They don't charge for ambulances for airlift or?
Airlift if it's directly to ICU with the cancer plan.
Okay. Just asking.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, I'd like for, uh, for you to reach out to Mr. Bob Trevino, our agent of record as well, for doing his, uh, a great job in, in finding and, and contracting with these insurance, insurances to provide our, our staff and our employees. Uh, perhaps now that they understand that they, they will be, you know, if they opt to, uh, go into any of these voluntary insurances, the prices are a little bit more palatable, and they're going to know that they'll be getting more bang for their buck.
And, and they will. And it includes a wellness benefit on all the policies. So with one receipt, we can claim on all of them. So we've been educating them on that and how to, to file a claim. And that we're also going to be here every Tuesday and helping them assist them with that.
I appreciate you all very much. Board members, any other questions?
I just have a comment also. Um, by us lowering these rates, now the staff has the opportunity to add more benefits that maybe they weren't adding before, you know, more, more insurances. And, uh, so I'm very happy that you're able to save our staff. That was one of the biggest concerns, you know, that, uh, I wanted to make sure that the staff would be able to, um, save money on the insurances. Uh, and, uh, that's going to help them out greatly. So thank you very much.
It does. It's, they're very good benefits. I brought books that we're giving all the employees. Can I pass them out so you can see what we are providing to them?
Sure. So you're, you're going to pass them out to, to us?
Yeah, just so you can know.
Okay.
These are the books that were due to all these plates, with all the phone numbers registered for information. And then all the, there was the changes on the...
There you go.
More [inaudible].
Awesome. Good. Thank you once again, Ms. Gonzalez. I appreciate you being here. And sorry, I, we apologize for the lateness, but thank you so much.
Okay.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, folks. At this time, uh, moving on to closed meeting, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney, uh, on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. It is 10:42. We're going into closed session. Time is 11:17, and we reconvene into open session. Just, uh, just for the record, we went out into closed session with item 6.1. I want that, uh, uh, reflected on the record, to discuss employment, resignation, retirements, and terminations. And now we're reconvening into open session to discuss actions on matters considered in closed session. So with that said, I turn it over to Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. I would recommend to the board they approve the employment, resignations, and retirements as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Okay. Orlando Lopez has moved. And then we have a second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, zero. Motion carries. Okay. Motion to adjourn. So moved. Motion by Oscar Medrano, second.
Second.
Second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mario, you didn't vote? You don't want to go? Ah, okay. Seven, zero. We're out. Good night, everyone. Have a good night.
Night.
Time is 11:18, and we are adjourned.